First, I'd like to thank Bill for giving me the opportunity to have the chance to organize this meeting for you all tonight. We drew straws today and he thought, given my news of moving on to Addison Northeast next year as superintendent, that this would be a great opportunity for me to have some official board time. So, thank you, Bill, for the opportunity. Okay. Wherever my agenda went. There you go. So, we are now officially called to order. Any public comments?
We're sad that you're leaving.
Thank you. I'll miss quite a lot from here as well. Okay, so, hearing no public comment, the next order of business is board reorganization. So, the first thing we need to do is hear any nominations for board chair.
I'd like to nominate Peter Collin as board chair.
All right, do we have a second?
I'd like to second it.
Second it. Any further nominations? Hearing none? All those in favor of electing Peter Collin as board chair for UD3, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Peter Collin.
All right, Patrick. Thank you, and a general congratulations from all of us on the board.
Thank you.
All right, continuing on with our board reorganization. For those of you who are unaware, our people serving had been me, JP as vice chair, and Lorraine as clerk slash recording secretary. And, so, open the floor to nominations for vice chair. Yes, Rick?
JP Reese for vice chair.
Nomination for JP Reese as vice chair. Anybody want to second that?
Second.
Thank you, Jerry. Any other nominations? Hearing no further nominations, all those in favor of JP Reese as vice chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Clerk? I would welcome any nominations for the position of clerk. Yes, JP Reese?
Nominate Lorraine Morris.
Excellent choice. There's nomination for Lorraine. Lorraine Morris?
No.
A second?
Second.
Thank you, Rick. Any other nominations for clerk? Hearing none? All those in favor of electing Lorraine Morris as clerk, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And, we have elected our slate of officers. We will do one more election and then we'll rejigger our agenda a little bit to accommodate our guests. So, we also need, it's not on your agenda, but we need to appoint three board members and one alternate. No. No alternates.
Yes.
Yes, and one alternate to the ACSU board. We just have to elect them. Our current members are Rick, Lorraine, and...
Mark.
And what's that? Oh, and Mark, of course. So, I will, somebody like to put those names in nomination, I guess?
I would leave those names.
All right. Anybody else want to be considered for the ACSU board? We also will need an alternate. Who has been our alternate?
I don't think we have one. I think it might be Allison.
Okay. All right. Well, we, anybody, everybody cool with Allison continuing as alternate? And if she's not, she is now anyway. Okay. All those in favor of our slate of delegates to the ACSU board, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. All right, rather than jumping into the various other pieces of annual business we have to do, we have Lynn Cole here for what has been an annual tradition, just kind of a report, the status of the Career Center, the relationship between the Career Center and the high school, a little bit talk about the expenses that go into our budget that are Career Center related, and really, anything else that we want to ask about or that Lynn wants to talk about. And Lynn, if you are ready, the floor is yours.
Before I get really started on my report, though, I realize that as you're reorganizing your board, Mark Perrin, you have two seats on the Hannaford Career Center board. One is filled by Mark, and I believe he is still on your board.
Yes.
Just talk about him and ACSU. But I don't believe Laura last is...
Is?
Is still on your board?
If you just could give it five minutes, she will be.
Okay.
Yeah, she's currently getting appointed by her elementary school board to return as a delegate to this board, or to return as the rep for this board.
I was kind of, you know, saying, but that's all right.
On that topic, has the Career Center board talked about how it's going to work with both Northwest and Central now moving into a single district?
Just tentatively. But I do believe that there are, well, obviously, there needs to be some bylaw changes that would come into effect probably. They need to be warned and they would come before the full voter population in the three supervisory unions. But yes, because UD3 won't be here, UD5 won't be here, so there has to be those changes.
Correct.
I don't know exactly how they're going to do that. Okay. Start to keep this way and keep that way. Congratulations, Patrick.
Thank you.
That's official now? Obviously is.
Pretty official, yes. No signatures on anything yet, but that's it.
Dick, would you like Lynn to wear the microphone?
It'll pick up okay.
Okay.
Do I need to be in any place particular? How about over here? Does that work better for you?
Back to the ceiling.
Yeah. Okay. So, if I don't have too much in my bag, too? So, for those of you who may not know me, my name's Lynn Cole. I'm the director and superintendent of the Hannaford Regional Technical School District that operates the Hannaford Career Center. What you may not know is we operate basically off of three campuses. We have our main campus, which is attached to the high school. We have, we have a presence at Virgin Union High School in terms of engineering and agriculture. And then we have our north campus, which houses our automotive and diesel program. Tonight, I wanted to do some, we'll talk about the budget a little bit, although it's already been voted on and those kinds of things. I think it's important that you kind of know what is driving that budget. I'm going to do an explanation of the tuition worksheet, which I kind of do every year, but it explains to folks how the Career Center is funded. We are a tuition-based. I'm also going to talk about six semester averages and compare those from district to district, all three of the districts, the larger. We do have a small population of students that come to us from Otter Valley, other schools, homeschool students, adults without diplomas, adults with diplomas, those kinds of things. I've done a history of MUHSs, UD3s, local assessment history. I also have done a history of the Hannaford Career Center budget since, I think it was FY13. And then I hope to leave some time for questions and comments. On the first page, the top line is the proposed budget that has now been voted on and was approved at town meeting day, so now it's no longer proposed. It is our budget for 1617, $3,521,263. That represents a .71 percent increase over last year's, over this present year's budget. The significant points in that budget, one of the things that, we are a tuition-based school, so, and we're paid not by the students that we have or the students we project, we are paid by the students that we have had. So, it's, the last count that went into this budget was October of '15. October 1st of '15, that became that rolling average that went in. That's how it always is. One of the significant things that I think the board has done, and there hasn't been a whole lot of changes, we haven't cut programs, we haven't added any programs. What, the significant change is, is they've added some funding to do extended learning experiences. And those will include, or could include, reach downs for exploratory experiences in elementary schools, middle school. It's to look at summertime kinds of things. We do a program Lorraine is familiar with, with midsummer, and we've done that for, I believe this will be our fifth summer. So, it will provide some funding for those students. It provides some funding for some activities that we might do, like lunch hour, after school, in summertime. So, it's an extended learning experience and that has been included in the budget. The other significant thing, and we did this a couple of years ago and it got us in trouble somewhat, because then we had to make it up and that was hard to explain. That's what I was doing here last year. We put $75,000 in out of tuition. So, we were, we had a fairly large carryover for FY15, and the board chose to put $40,000 of that to return it to the taxpayers in the form of a tuition reduction. So, that's the first line where you see relevant budget revenue. You will see fund balance from July 1st, 2015, of $40,000. So, that, what that eventually does is reduce the bottom line of tuition. Our anticipation, again, we get paid by who we had, not who we have or are going to have. So, our anticipation is that our enrollments will come up enough to offset that. So, there shouldn't be any great increase in tuition next year. Most of those budget items that in terms of revenue are kind of set, so that ends up, so, okay. So, I'm kind of moving on to the next item. Are there any questions on the budget piece of that before I do that?
What's a Perkins grant?
Okay. So, if we're ready to move on, I'll move on. Okay. So, the tuition worksheet...
Oh, sorry, I thought I was...
That's okay. Perkins grant is federal funding. That is, it's the Carl Perkins Career and Technical Education funding. It comes into the state of Vermont and is divided basically by the number of students, high school students in any catchment region. Ours runs between 100 and, we're budgeting a little bit low there. It runs between 110 and 120,000. It also has an economic disadvantage and special ed connotation, so it's much the same as the type 1 allocation, but it's based on the number of high school students in any given catchment region. And our catchment region is Addison Northwest or Addison Northeast and Addison Central. And that's an entitlement grant. We have to write the grant, but it comes to us. It funds pretty much all of our, it's used to fund our coaches, our literacy and mathematics coaches, and it's used to do our professional development. The health insurance reimbursement is a piece that we share, I believe the only one we're sharing with now is ID4, and quite honestly, I believe it's myself and my wife. So, what we do when we, when we had the separation of governments, we found that was in both When we had spouses that were, we split the cost of those insurance provisions, so that's what that is. And the salary reimbursement is a state grant that comes to us for 50% of my salary. It also covers co-op guidance and, I believe, some special ed monies. Okay? So, those total are kind of out there revenues. That gives $338,000. You can see, we subtract that from our total budget of 3.5. And then we have our six semester average. And our six semester average that we're using as our multiplier is 133.92, almost 134 students. When I get to the, those histories, you will find that that's down from about 160 students five years, five years, four years, excuse me. We have the state-based payment grant. We have been told that that is supposed to go up by 2%. We budget conservatively. We're basing that on what it was this year, which is $9,459. That's paid on behalf of the schools, straight to us, or 87% of it, 13% remains in the high school. In addition to that, we get a tuition assistance, which is 35% of that base grant. And that, all of these are multiplied by that 133.92, and you can see step 5 and step 6 are the totals of that. So, then, that, we subtract that total amount from our budget, and then that leaves us, what do we have to raise via local assessment? And this year, it's $1,637,000, which gives us, yeah, an estimated tuition local assessment that should be of $12,225. Our local assessment last year was $12,015, increase of 210, which is 100, or 1.75% increase in our tuition rate. So, there are announced tuition, which is a legal term that we have to post and talk about, and you saw it probably when you voted, it was part of our warning, is the local assessment, $12,225, plus the 85, 87% of the state base payment, or $8,229. So, our total announced tuition is $20,554. Questions on that complicated formula?
When they're calculating that per pupil cost at the state level for funding and tax purposes and all that, is the 20,000 number the one that they use for you, or is it the 12,000? When they say per pupil tuition?
The per pupil tuition does not, our costs will go into your budget, and then you will divide that by the number of pupils that you have. And that is what goes into the state for tax purposes.
So, in other words, you're not bound by any caps imposed, because those expenses end up in our budget, we're the ones who are bound by that.
Correct. They affect your caps, they affect Mount Apes' caps, they affect Virgin Union High School caps. We are not bound by caps. We, out of respect for our schools, made the decision that we would live by the caps. So, as you can see, we are under those caps, or the percentage was basically that UD3 had to get. Okay? But, in reality, that's more of us trying to honor those than any kind of bond that we have. Other questions? That's how our tuition is figured, how it gets, so, the next page, I actually have it out of order a little bit, but I think it makes more sense to go to the very last page, starts with Middlebury Union High School. And I'm not going to read through all this data, you can do that, and I'll point out a couple of things. First of all, the local tuition or the local assessment rate, it says local tuition, that's how that has sugared out for the last four years, so it gives you a history. And then the local assessment to UD3 is on the right. So, that figure, 7,000, 774,971, is the figure that would go into UD3's budget, and then that would be divided by all of the students in your high school. So, we compute it based on how many come, but it's paid for through taxes by how many are in your high school. That make sense? The other question that is asked a lot of me is, what percentage of the total are UD3 students? So, our six semester average is on, where, on the top column, is for UD3, Middlebury Union High School. And if you go through the six semester average on the right-hand column, where you look at our budget history, that's the total number that we were figuring on. So, if you do that math, that should come up to those percentages.
So, what those numbers mean, Lynn, is that our participation is going down, but because our percentage of the participation is going up, the other district's participation is going down more quickly than ours, right?
Yes. That's how I understand it as well.
One more time.
So, our numbers are going down. You can see that, right? In the six semester average.
You lost six full-time equivalent students over the last six years.
But our percentage of the total has gone up in that same time.
By 4%.
Right. So, what that means is that the numbers from the other sending districts are going down more rapidly than ours, or have gone down in the last six semesters more rapidly than ours.
Correct.
Thanks.
Okay.
It's on the new SAT.
I was really concerned, I am still concerned, about the percentage of our FTEs. I mean, that's 27 student, full-time equivalent students. 20,000 of kit, that's a fair chunk of change relieved from the budget. So, that is concerning. Our anticipation is that such like turns some for next year. You can also see our percent increases of our budget over the course of the last four years, which tends to be pretty reasonable. Back to that question, you get, you get a pretty good idea of those percentage decreases and where that is. I don't have the six semester averages, but I have the six semesters. And although it's up a little bit from Mount Apes the last couple of years, it was, if you go back further than that, there were some, some bigger numbers. Virgin's is held pretty steady. Middlebury's gone up slightly. Questions on any of that?
I have a question, Lynn.
Yes.
Just looking at the local tuition rate on this page?
Yep.
It looks like since the 1213 year, that's gone up somewhere in the neighborhood of 35%. Just curious if you could talk about the factors that led to that?
It's declining enrollment. I mean, plain and simple, that's the factors we have. Between that time, we did have a new faculty agreement, but everybody has faculty agreements.
So, just fewer kids to sort of split the cost of the...
Yeah. I think our board decided, the other factor is we have added some faculty in terms of support to students, in terms of math coaches and literacy coaches. We have had an increase of free reduced lunch students, and we have had an increase of students that are not hitting, meeting the standards in math and reading. But, the only increase in staff that we've had has been in those areas. But, quite honestly, it's, we haven't decreased a lot of staff because we're kind of one of one. So, if we do, we cut an entire program. And our board has said, you know, we have to offer a broad range of career and technical education. So, they have, they have decided to kind of hold that line. So, I guess my, my answer to you was the first one, and I should have stopped there because it's, you know, you've lost 27 students over that same amount of time, and you've tried to maintain your offerings. Well, there's only other, one other way that could do it, and then you've got to raise your tuition.
Sure.
Any other questions while we're cruising along here?
Your compensation scale, how comfortable is that to the ACSU for professional staff?
I think it's fairly close. I think we might be just a little bit higher, but I think we're fairly close. We have kind of a, we have an increase where those people are falling on the salary schedule. So, we have a lot more masters with credits and people with experience. But, I think that generally, our salary schedule is close, but I think it's a little bit higher. Bill?
Lynn, do you see, or have you had any opportunities to talk to principals from the county? Because we're all, to some degree, facing the same issue in terms of declining enrollment. So, we, we're all in a position of having to do more with, you know, sort of this diminished group. And I'm wondering if you see any opportunities in our community, principals to try and, given what we have, enhance opportunities for kids to, that would help, you know, your enrollment?
So, the first part of your question, have I had conversations with the principals? I've had conversations with you. The, I have not had a lot of conversations with the Mount Apes principals because that's a bit, kind of hard to catch up to. We've had a lot of conversations with Virgin, so the two schools that we're working, the closest with, the most collaborative with, at this point, are Virgin's and Middlebury. You know, there are stuff that we could probably do, but I don't think that there's anything like, here's our strategic plan.
And what we're all facing, sort of some issues, I mean, we, there's a lot of kids to, for example, high school completion.
Right.
So, there's a population there that we, that I think all high schools could look at differently, try and keep them in as opposed to letting them out.
I did speak to the state legislature. There's a couple, and I don't want to get too far down that rabbit hole, but we're not sending enough students onto post-secondary. I'd like to see us all sending more. I think our high schools are headed for a major crisis in terms of personalized learning plans and those kinds of things. So, I've encouraged folks to start looking at, not only how we're looking at career technical education, and it might be a good format to do some early college through, but I also am concerned about the funding model for our high schools, as money follows students and everybody in the world are planning how they're going to capture all these students. And it's like, you know, I'm concerned that our high schools are going to become bus stops, where kids come in in the morning, and I think that's all good, but the high schools are still going to be charged with the role of providing all of those stopgaps for all of those kids that, you know, don't go this way or don't go that way. So, I'm hoping that they... So I'm, I'm hoping that they, they commission a study to really look at the whole high school and how we're doing that. Because we're not sending enough kids to, to college. We're graduating kids at a very high rate, but they're not going on at a, at a, at a high rate, and they're not completing their degrees on time at a very high rate. And on the other side of that, by 2020, they're projecting that if you're going to make a living wage in Vermont, you have to have an associate's degree or better. So I think that that is, is a challenge. Challenges are obviously good, but I don't think we should just sit and ignore those challenges. I think that they can come upon us very, very quickly.
As, oh, go ahead.
I'm sure you're aware that the ACSU is considering and studying the possibility of pursuing IB, and I understand his career track along those lines as well. I wonder if you and the board's committee consider able to consider that?
Uh, no. It doesn't mean that we won't, but the question was, have we, we have not? And, and I, I'm not, I'm not first enough in international baccalaureate to really make a comment.
We did have, to your credit, preliminary discussion.
I'm sorry?
We did have a preliminary discussion.
As I said, Bill and I have talked about almost all of these things, so.
So the funding model for career centers relies a lot on state money. Has the state been, you know, reassuring to career centers that the funding model is stable and solid?
I, I believe so, yeah. I mean, we're all losing kids. I, I got a, one of my colleagues, Riverbend Technical Center, has full-time equivalent student body of 79 students. And I was, I mean, I don't know how, when you start getting that level, I don't know how you can offer a pride, broad range. I mean, if we're struggling at 133 full-time equivalent students, they got, they have half that. So I think that that's a, I mean, just our whole state is, has, has fewer kits.
They're just going to come with it?
I mean, if you look at our, our three high schools in the 15 years that I've been here, I mean, we're, if you put them all three together with the tech center, you would have one fairly nice-sized high school. You wouldn't have a huge high school. You would have one fairly nice-sized high school. And that might be a consideration at some point down the road.
Further questions? All right. Well, thank you very much, Lynn. Appreciate your time.
Yeah, anytime you want me to come back and talk about career technical education or anything else, I'm open to doing that.
Great.
Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Congratulations on, on the courage of ACSU and their vote, their successful vote.
Thank you. And that does bring up one thing that in our euphoria over the unification vote that we have not talked about, and that we also need to express appreciation for, is the fact that the UD3 budget passed by probably one of the widest margins I've ever seen, if not the widest. And just a round of applause to us and our administrators for that. All right, on to more mundane things. Vicki, how well-versed are you in, in this stuff?
Just fine.
All right, so one of, one parts of our annual business is we've got to approve a board member or two to approve invoices at any time. There's not a quorum or board meeting date, and it's not at a regularly scheduled time. So in other words, we need a, a resolution, which we have here, the wording for, but it requires a decision on our part as to who will be authorized to essentially approve paying bills and signing checks.
So it can be any specific two people or any two?
Right. So year after year, I have forgotten how we do this. If we say any two board members, all right. So let's read the, the resolution, and then somebody can move it. The Board of Directors authorizes the following: Board members to review, authorize, payment, and sign director's orders as needed when the school board does not meet on a regularly-scheduled invoice payment approval date. In addition, the Board of Directors authorizes the treasurer to sign checks for necessary slash, slash urgent school payments as recommended by the ACSU business manager or superintendent of schools between regularly-scheduled invoice payment dates. It's going to work a lot better now. All right. The Board of Directors will ratify the approval of necessary payments at their regular, next regularly-scheduled board meeting by approving all payments made since the last regularly-scheduled invoice payment date. Authorized board members, which would be any two board members, would be given this authority. Also, the Board of Directors requests the board distribution of school finance reports as follows, and I think the choices are just to the finance committee or to every member of the school board. I think we'll stick with every member of the school board since it's done electronically anyway. All right, so would somebody just please move that?
You need names?
What's that?
I don't do that.
Thank you, Lorraine. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Any discussion on this? Any further questions? Any clarification?
Any two board members.
No, we're saying any two board members.
Yep. And then...
I have a question.
Yes.
As the taker of the minutes, can I have?
Yes, of course.
Mm-mm.
For some reason, we were given plenty of copies of it.
Excellent.
Okay.
And then this first one is to authorize the business manager and the superintendent of schools to exercise the powers granted below, which is open or closed deposit or share accounts in the name of the organization.
All right, well, hold on. We've got a motion on the floor that we've got to just finish up with. Okay, so any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the long resolution about board authorization for invoice payments and financial statement distribution, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Great. So then number two.
Yep.
So we're, oh, let's see. Where do we, what's the?
So open or close deposit or share account.
Okay, the following position titles, move to have the following position titles authorized to exercise the powers, open or close deposit or share accounts in the name of the, of UD3, enter into a written lease for the purpose of renting, maintaining, accessing, and terminating a safe deposit box, execute various bank account, bank agreements, wire transfer agreements, ACH agreements, I don't know what that means, night depository agreements, and merchant processing agreements, sign, execute, and deliver documents as needed for the above items, provide financial institutions with names of persons occupying positions for signature changes, and request copies of bank statements, inquire about bank balances or other audit account questions for all bank accounts under this tax identification number. And those authorized titles would be treasurer, business manager, superintendent, principal, assistant principal, activities director. And inquiry only by the administrative assistant to the activities director as well as principal and assistant principal. How about it? So moved. Thank you, Rick. So second, Steve, thank you very much. Any questions? All right, all those in favor of those powers being granted to those titles, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Excellent.
So I need your signature.
All right, chair to sign employment contracts, okay. Okay. And finally, I need authorization for the chairman of the UD3 board to sign employment contracts at the recommendation of the superintendent. Lynn?
Someone?
We'll give JP. One second?
Second.
Jared gets a second. All those in favor of authorizing the chair of the board to sign employment contracts at the recommendation of the superintendent, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. And that is our annual business. Okay, let's move on to regular agenda here, about a motion to approve most recent minutes. Lorraine moves to approve the minutes as provided.
Second.
Second from Michelle. Any changes?
No, but I would commend largely following my template, then doing the next one job on the...
So commended. JP, I don't know if that was meant as a hint to you, but... All those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody want to abstain? All right. And who would like to report out the bills? Lorraine?
On March 1st, JP and I read bills for some amounts, general fund, $558,144.36. And then this afternoon, JP and I read bills, and we have general funds in the amount of $359,900 and more cents in the proposed amounts.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the director's orders as reported, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, excellent. Would you pass those to JP? JP, they just need your signature when you get a break. Okay, report of the principals. We have written reports. I don't know if there's anything further to add. Patrick, although we think our big report. Bill?
I'm from Middle Tech. I have a little bit of the sort of excitement from my perspective on the schools, looking at the IB and additional works in the report. There, one of the principals from the Stray School, because a couple of years ago, he's visiting him as our guest Thursday and Friday this week to take a look at population programs to sort of have a student's...
And I would add, at some point, we, either as the UD3 board or in general session with the whole ACSU, will have a much more in-depth presentation about the international baccalaureate. We keep talking about it, but nobody's been able to, gotten, gotten quite the full, full information. Any questions for Bill or Patrick?
I have a question.
Yes?
I don't know if this is the right time, but I foresee a better time.
Great.
Looking at this financial report that we receive on a monthly basis ahead of all the line items coming, and this month it indicates that we are running within $1,257,000 or plus, which is not far off the $1,333 that we had last month. And my question is, is there any sense that that is an accurate number?
Please.
Sure. Sorry. No, I can tell you, I can tell you from the high school's perspective that we're surplus of around $182,000 in regular education salary on, and that's due to the fact that we budgeted a year ago, we planned on a certain set of faculty, and that faculty has seven changes, and that we were able to hire, reduce, savings, and that's where that $182,000 comes from. Probably the next biggest jump from the high school would be building grounds because of the disparity in fuel costs between what we thought they anticipated they would be a year ago and what they turned out to be this year. And we continue to marvel at that, that we have to fuel to a, you know, top 15 million as opposed to what we thought years ago would be in $380,000. So those are the two big areas in the high school.
Same in the middle school budget. Those are the same two areas, smaller numbers, but same two areas. And I don't, I don't think it's accurate that we're going to end with a one-point-something million-dollar surplus.
Just, just a regular program, we're looking at $533,000 surplus, and obviously that's not the case.
Not likely to be the case.
Some of that money gets, you know, spent in a month-to-month during the year. Times when you project, we try and we fit one zero, and the reality is, is that our money's a perfect amount of spending on, on a, you know, that's a good thing in our lean years, that's, you know, a lot of the question.
So for our purposes as a board, this document doesn't provide much value as we consider budgets and so forth, it's plus or minus a half million dollars.
I've been, I've spent the last three years trying to get a handle on, how do we, how can we really project with any kind of accuracy what the end-of-the-year balance is going to be? I haven't figured out how to do that yet. It's a really difficult number to pin down, even as we get this close to the end of the year.
I would actually look at it differently in terms of budgeting ahead for the year. I think that, you know, the example of oil, the example of salaries, just the budget cycle, the budget development cycle isn't really aligned with the reality of hiring and, in the case of oil, the market. It may never be, actually, get this year.
Well, if we do end the year with a million five, we'll... Figure out something, something to do with it.
Maybe a turf field or something.
Give it to ACSU.
All right. Any further, excuse me, further questions on, on those reports? All right. So I'll talk a little bit about number eight on the agenda, which is the transition to the new Addison Central School District Board. We're going to have more of that for those of you who will stick around for the in-between session for a half an hour. It'll be gone into in more depth. But essentially, as, as many of you probably have read and or know, the boards as they currently exist will continue as they, as they are today governed for, until the end of, of 2017, with sort of decreasing activity as that time goes along. And really, come July 1st, 2017, all functions really cease to exist other than in case there's a, a document that needs to be signed or authorized by this board, generally referring to property more than anything else. But in the more immediate future, the, it's up to the Secretary of Education to call together the new school board, and she's busy with those boards that are going to go fully operational on July 1st. So she's getting those, those boards put together first. Will come later, probably mid to late May, she'll call a meeting of that board. That board will probably just sort of go through the motions of electing a moderator, a treasurer, and a clerk at the first meeting, and then establishing a meeting time, which by the way, we have to do as well. Then probably June, have the first real substantive meeting, which, you know, a chair would be elected and, and the other officers of the board, and move forward from there. The function and, and sort of the, the operation of that board is really going to be focused on the three main issues, which are policy, negotiations, and budgeting for the entire school system. Now, what does that leave for us? Probably the more day-to-day stuff than the stuff that we're legally obligated to take care of. We've still got to pay the bills, and we were having a conversation about how often do we have to meet in order to authorize those, those bill payments? And we're probably then looking at, hopefully, every other month, but we're going to check into that in more thoroughness. The, the finance committee that actually goes through the bills will still have to do it at least once a month, if not twice a month. We'll have grievances, disciplinary hearings, that sort of thing, as they occur. Beyond that, we're still trying to figure it out as, as we go along. But the sort of meetings and whatnot will move at a slower pace more than likely in the next school year. Of course, the new board will be meeting at least monthly, and everybody is always welcome to those. I'm trying to remember if I had something else I was going to say about this, but I can't recall. We're missing here, Rick?
The, on the agenda for the executive committee later this month is laying out that calendar of how the ACSU boards will, will meet, so that the chairs at that one will get together and determine that, tentatively.
Yeah.
Negotiations council will be the other thing we'll talk about a little later on, but that has form within the ACSU, as everyone's aware. And tent right now, we'll talk about this at the ACSU meeting, make sure that's the rule of the, of the board, is that that would continue in form until the SD takes over that role. So we continue to meet and coalesce around that as a topic. So we continue to meet and coalesce around that as a topic.
Yep.
So, um, I'm sorry, I guess I, I got a little confused there. You said that, that we're going to hold on to budgets, negotiations, and?
No, the new, the new board does those things.
Okay, so you know that, um, next year is a negotiation year for the contract, so then the new board will constitute that or this board will?
Yes, yeah, the new board will, yeah. So the new board will be doing negotiations, budgeting for the entire system, uh, and policy.
Got it.
Yeah, and kind of the, the future big view, uh, things that come up. Yeah, and, uh, so basically, you know, April, we'll have a regular meeting, May, we'll have a regular meeting, um, continue our business as usual, June, more than likely. Then we have our, our usual summer break. Uh, and then come September, we'll, we'll sort of keep everybody apprised as to what the next step is. And we'll get more for those of you who will stick around for the next, next session, which would be good to do. Other business, we need to establish our regular meetings, a piece of business I left off. Uh, we continue to have set as our official meeting time, the first and third Tuesdays of the month at six o'clock. And I would suggest we go along and, and keep that. I'm not sure we need to vote on it. Okay, I've got that on that. We'll, we'll just keep it, um, status quo. Uh, we have an executive session next Tuesday, and what I need is a show of hands as to who can make it to that meeting.
What, what time?
Uh, this will be at six PM Tuesday at the high school. All right, so, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. That makes a quorum, and we're missing a few who I think can make it.
I'd say the time wants to give next?
Six PM.
Tuesday, Tuesday.
Yep. And I'll be at the high school.
Peter, are you sure of the location?
Uh, no, I take that back. Uh, location to be determined. At this point, consider that it's going to be the second, eight, two oh eight, at the Career Center. Thanks. Yep, unless you hear differently, that's the, that's the location. And this is a student discipline hearing. Our next meeting date is April fifth. Do we have any other business? Oh, uh, board reports? Um, any committees have met? Yes, Lorraine?
I would just bring up, because I guess on the Nutrition Committee, I would, it's kind of a moot point now, but, um, we have been discussing, um, uh, they'd like to have more local meats in the meal program, but the budget's only so much. And I had mentioned that at Mary Hogan, we had authorized some additional five thousand dollars. I don't think it was for local meat, I think it had to be for something else. But, um, the board had authorized that in our budget. And this was before we had voted to now purchase the new ACSU. But I said I would check with the, our board, see whether they would be so inclined to, um, give perhaps up to ten thousand dollars in the budget, which of course, the budget's already passed now for next year and then the year after, we won't be using this. But I would be curious just to know whether board members in general think that's a good idea to, um, contribute to the food program in that way, so we can have more local meats in our, for our students.
Nick?
Uh, just the general local, you know, groups, as we'll need more nutritious locally served.
Who, who's asking? Who's asking for this, the food service company?
Well, no, the food service, the Nutrition Committee is just going to talk about.
Oh, the Nutrition Committee?
And I had mentioned that they're going to authorize.
So are they involved with farm-to-school program? Because there, there's programs out there that, that sort of facilitate this whole process. And I would think the Abbey Group is, is part of that, so I would.
They may be, but I think it's more the local meats are more expensive.
Well, yeah, they are, they are more expensive, but what is local? Is it being Middlebury? Does it mean Addison County? Is it being fifty miles, a hundred miles? There's different categories and, and so, and, uh, so it depends why somebody's looking for local meats. You know, what, what is it? Is it peppered thing? Is it, is it nutritious reasons? Is it, I mean, for example, Career Center raises chickens. At one point, Mary Hogan incubated the eggs and then turned them over to Skeet's, uh, in the yak program. And then that first year was a tough time selling chickens. And now, I mean, that could be something for example.
Well, perhaps we do have that on the agenda, just another, again, we can, we're not going to be voting on a budget, but if anybody's interested in hearing more about it, I'm sure they would like to talk to us.
Actually, at some point, I think it'd be good to, maybe in, in, uh, May or June, just get a report, since we have a new vendor, as to how the whole year went and what, what changes might be in store for the year after. Yeah, we'll, we'll try to, remember to put that on the agenda for May or June.
Thanks.
All right, anything else from anybody? Uh, yes, Jerry?
Have we done comments and questions from the public?
Well, we did early on, and we got, we got waved off, so.
Okay, we got waved off, thank you.
Um, I, I think that, uh, Peter kind of gave a, a summary as to the next steps for filling the middle school principalship. It'd be the, the usual, uh, format of posting the ad, putting, putting together a search committee and moving forward. Get more details about the opportunities for us to participate in that, I haven't heard yet. All right, well, right on time for the general session, I would, uh, take a, uh, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. All in favor of adjournment, say aye. Thank you all very much.